Okay, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of March 7th, 2023. Time is 6:00 PM. We have all members present. We do have minutes to approve, but we're gonna hold off until the next meeting on those just because I hadn't had the chance to review them. Is anybody here for public speak time for anything other than what's on the agenda? I don't believe that we would. So we have continuing business, and the continuing business we'll start with tonight since Counselor Zare is here, is the amending City Council ordinances, adding Section 6-23, Safe and Fair Access to Legally Protected Reproductive Gender Affirming Healthcare Services. We did get new language. I did print out a copy for people to see. I did have a chance to review this language, and you know, from my perspective, I find it to be much more concise, much, I like it a lot better. So that's where I'm at. But that being said, my opinion is less important than our opinion as a body. So let's have Counselors Zare start maybe with the introduction to what got changed, what it says now, and we'll go from there.
Sure. So I think the previous language that was, I think the only real substantial change for the most part was in Section 6-23.4, maybe a little bit in 6-23.5, which should have been 5, I don't know why there's a .1 there. But anyways, I think the prior 6-23.4 was more, sounded more like we were performing local enforcement, like it basically had prescriptions for around deceptive advertising. And I think the goal here in this new version is more to mandate information from the state and the local level about reproductive and gender-affirming care. So I, with some input, basically changed the language more to reflect that in terms of basically stating what the stated goal there is. That is to include any information from the Commonwealth relative to that topic, which may also include information pertaining to limited services or crisis practices, but not completely to include that because there's other information that the state puts out.
Right.
And then, and obviously, you know, including advisories, et cetera, et cetera. And then, again, for the sake of facilitating information, like to basically let people know how to file any complaints with the Attorney General's Office through their current existing form. Just to refresh also, Attorney General Healy had created an advisory, and that's been upheld by Attorney General Campbell, who's only strengthened that position, is forming a commission or a committee on reproductive justice. And also to that end, I had some conversations kind of around the Attorney General's Office and their piece in this, as well as their receptiveness to this. And my takeaway from that was that this would accomplish exactly what we think it would. It would facilitate on the local level the able to access the enforcement, the other oversight on the state level, which currently, there really isn't much in the Commonwealth. They basically have these advisories and these abilities to do the complaints and information, but there's no real way that that information is necessarily getting to municipalities.
Right.
This accomplishes that, which is, I think, one of the reasons why, you know, this language has been mentioned so much in reproductive justice circles as kind of a model to facilitate information about reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare without getting into the weeds of assuming that we can perform enforcement at the local level. So I think that's pretty much, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think that it might just be helpful, since this is, the section that we're talking about is so small, do you mind if I just read it? Because I think as people make, if, you know, people are inclined to make comments, I'd like for the comments to be specific to this language that we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, you're the chair, you can do whatever you want.
So I think that that, to me, makes, I think it makes sense to, you know, just put it out there. So what we're talking about is fair access to information. The city acknowledges that access to safe, legal, and transparent reproductive and gender-affirming care is within the interests of the municipality.
Excuse me, what are you reading? Which paragraph?
So 6-23.4.
Okay.
Yep. "The city shall make available in writing or via electronic communications information from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that's relevant to accessing reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare. This may include information pertaining to limited services, crisis pregnancy centers, entities performing reproductive services in the Commonwealth, as well as advisories, notices, or other general information that's relevant to reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare. The city shall notify the public of resources available concerning deceptive advertising regarding reproductive healthcare as noted in Section 6-23, 5.1. The Health Department shall post on its official city website any current or future consumer advisories issued by the Commonwealth related to reproductive and gender-affirming care. The Health Department shall also provide a link to sexual reproductive healthcare locations from the mass.gov website. The Health Department shall advise residents of their right to file a consumer complaint by our form provided by the Office of the Attorney General Consumer Advisory and Response Division, which shall be made available on the official city website and at City Hall." So that's what we're talking about here. So I guess I had to open it up to the councilors, if you have any questions or comments.
Um, no, I mean, I think there's nothing in here. Seems like an overstep with anything to me. Just putting some information on the website, but, and, no, I guess I don't have any.
Yes. If you don't have a comment, there's.
Excuse me, is there a question specific to this one section or just in general?
Whatever you feel like you'd like to.
Well, because if you wanted to respond to this specific section, you can go ahead, and then I just have one comment specifically about the entire document.
Yeah, I mean, I think, from my perspective, the language is cleaned up.
Yep.
And is way more concise and clear. So I, because, you know, I think one of the concerns before was that this potentially, you know, does something that it doesn't, which is, like, target some entity here or there. This pertains to anybody that is talking about reproductive healthcare, and I think that the sentence that says that, I think, is important to acknowledge here, that it may include information pertaining to limited services or crisis pregnancy centers, or entities performing reproductive services in the Commonwealth.
Which is what? Which is what?
Which is anybody performing reproductive services in the Commonwealth.
Like Planned Parenthood.
Yes.
So my only, my only comment about the remainder of the document, and I know this was brought up in a previous meeting and was reinforced by the city clerk in an email earlier today, that the preamble and the findings shouldn't be a part of the ordinances, but other than that, everything else looks perfectly fine to me.
That was gonna be, I was gonna bring that up, because I had brought that up before.
Yep.
And that was my original intent. I know that Counselor Zare wasn't super, you know, excited about that. I feel like it would, it makes things more consistent and cohesive within the ordinances. I'm happy, Counselor Zare, for you to say your piece. I think, Counselor Riley, I'm tending to agree with Barbara.
Yeah.
On that one.
Yep.
Just to keep things, you know, within the same format.
Yeah, other than that, every, the actual content of the ordinance is perfectly fine to me.
Yep. Counselor P.
Well, I think I'd hear from Counselor Zare first, but I was just gonna say, I think in previous cases where we've had things like this, we've done a resolution that's passed concurrently with the ordinance, so that the sort of thought process has been a matter of public record, but doesn't necessarily all need to end up in the city ordinance. That's just an idea I throw out there, but I.
So Counselor Zare.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that to respond to, and obviously, you know, to quick respond to that email because there was a quorum of the, my only comment I would say is that just because things haven't been done a certain way, doesn't even can't be done. I think that because of the kind of complexity of this, I think, I felt that the preamble's important, but I don't have a problem with including it elsewhere and referencing it or something like that. You may or may not need to, I think it would be fine, I mean, I think you probably don't have to then include a scope or anything like that, I think you could, as long as it's referenced maybe somewhere.
Yeah.
The other quick thing I just want to add to is I had a conversation with someone from an organization that generally represents marginalized populations, and they made a comment about how the information is shared, that a lot of this is about access, that generally the people who are most likely to benefit from this are from disenfranchised populations, whether it be financially disenfranchised, or BIPOC community, or the GLTQ community, and might not look necessarily to the city website as a source of information. So I, the language, they were saying something to the effect of tweaking the language just slightly to say that, to basically task the municipality to make language available, which could include, obviously, the city website, but also more broadly to make sure that there's suggestion that further outreach should be performed.
So that would be like, maybe under the A piece, where it says, "The Health Department shall also provide a link," and from the mass.gov website, and, and, so that means that there we would probably want to add in a paper copy available or something like that?
Yeah. Probably like, "The Health Department shall post on its official city website and through other means of communication throughout the city."
Okay.
Something like that.
Yep. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah.
An addendum.
Just, this is, you've heard so much from me about this when we're talking about the Vegas storefronts, but I think that we're gonna, I'm fine with that, but if we're gonna do something like that, we should probably specifically state whose job it is to determine what are the appropriate places to reach out to, like, say, like, as deemed appropriate by the health director or something like that, just so that it's like, well, who are we determining, who's making that call?
The Health Department. I think the Health Department would be tasked with determining, they have a better understanding, I think, than we do, whether it be through the public health nurse, or the social worker, where there are, whether our populations that might not be reached through traditional forms of communication, and how to reach them. So, yeah, I think as determined by the Health Director or their designee.
Yeah, that's all I'm, yeah.
No, I think that makes sense. I mean, and this does start with the Health Department shall, so if we add it into there, then it's implicit that the Health Department will be responsible for that. So that seems like a small enough change that I would be, say that that's something we could just go ahead and amend.
Yeah, okay, I'll just add something in there right now.
So I think that's fine. Any other thoughts from the committee? Okay, I'll open it. So just a reminder, when you speak, just name an address for the minutes, and try to keep your comments as close to the language that we're discussing here. I don't need to know your opinions on everything. I would love to know your opinion on this. So if you are interested in speaking, just raise your hand, let us know your, name and address.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Um, so.
Name an address again, sorry.
Oh, Pam Heber, East Hampton. So this was the draft that we were supposed to get from before. Remember you said we'd get a copy? You said last week, we were told we would get a copy by somebody, but we never got it. So this is the copy we were supposed to get?
This is the copy that is the language that we're working off of right now.
Okay, so, um, where is this? So if we, let's say we have our lawyer take a look at this, and what he feels about that, and then we come back to, what's the next meeting gonna be like?
So.
We're still discussing this one piece of paper, next meeting?
So as far as timeline, it can be, it depends on whether we decide to take action on it tonight. If we do, then will, that will be a request for us to send it to our city solicitor, and then we'll get comments from them, and the next step from there is to send it to the full council for the public hearing. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sanders, Evans, Geeks, I'll have it. Is that an extra copy?
Yes.
Could I have?
Yes, please.
And this includes all the adjustments that have made to the original ordinance that's online?
Yes. Yep, this is the most up to date.
This one?
I just printed it out.
And you just mentioned.
And I also just read the part that we were talking about.
Yes. You just mentioned the protocol or procedure that if you decide to go with it, you will send it to your lawyer, is that correct?
Correct.
And now if he makes a comment, will you have another meeting here possibly?
Yes. Yeah, so either way, we'll have another meeting at this level before we, just to get feedback from the solicitor. And then from there, if we get, if we, the solicitor says this looks fine, then we'll make the determination to send it to the full council. When we send it to the full council, there will be a public hearing at the full council.
That's a good idea.
Nope. It'll be at a full city council meeting. So we're just a committee.
Right, right.
So we would recommend, the committee would recommend it to the full council, and then the full council would deliberate and take a vote, yes or no?
When would the public hearing come?
At the. At the, at the full council.
When you deliver it to the full council, that will also be a public hearing?
Well, we'll be, yes, yeah. So, I mean, so, so like, let's just say, tonight, we vote to send this to the solicitor, and then in two weeks at our next meeting, we vote to send it to the full council. So then, let's just say, our second April meeting, we receive that, we would set, we would set a public hearing then, probably for a meeting in May.
Oh, okay.
So the full council would receive it, but they wouldn't do anything with it until the public hearing.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so you would, they would discuss it, and then make a date for a public hearing?
We'd actually, we'd probably wait to discuss it fully until the public hearing, so people can have comment. Yep.
That gives me some kind of calendar to schedule. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other thoughts? Anybody in attendance?
I think.
We got this gentleman right here, so.
Sorry.
No, you haven't been able to speak yet, so go ahead.
I just had some more to read.
Sure, just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
My name's Billy Park, and I live in Florence.
Okay.
So I wrote something.
And just, just be aware that we do have, we haven't had to use this much, but generally we have a three-minute time.
Yeah, I think it's about three minutes.
Okay.
I was trying to be considerate of your time.
Yep.
Okay. My name is Billy Park, I'm the father of two teenagers. This is not politics to me, it is personal. Believe me when I say it is not gender ideology, it is not ideology at all, it is gender anarchic, with no rules or limits, just an endless limit.
I'm gonna stop you there. Actually, can you, can you just explain to me how this relates to the ordinance that we're talking about?
Well, this is about gender-affirming care, is it not?
I would, I think I'd prefer your comments to be more specific about the language that we are discussing. It sounds like you're giving me your ideology, I don't care what your ideology is, I want to know what your opinion is on what we're looking at. So if you wouldn't mind just sticking to what we're discussing, I think that would be more beneficial for everybody.
Okay, well, maybe other people in here want to have to say.
Then you guys can go outside, and they can listen to you all day long, but this is my meeting, and I am determining that what you're saying right now is not really pertinent to what we're discussing.
It's not gender ideology, and I was getting into that, and that's what decides gender-affirming care.
Can you just, can you just tell me how it applies to the ordinance that we're looking at?
Well, it applies to what gender-affirming care and what it does to children, which is the bottom line. So that's what, what I think most people are concerned about, is where this heads. So I just want to talk about what I was gonna say.
Okay, what I'd like you to do is I'd like you to really try to make this as feedback to the ordinance that we're looking at. So I understand what you're saying, that it's related to a subject that this ordinance talks about, but, you know, I want to know if you have an issue with a particular piece of this ordinance, that's what our committee is looking at. Like, if you don't agree with, like, gender-affirming care.
Yep.
That's fine, but can you tell us, like, what in here you specifically don't agree with? Like, what are the steps that you think don't, like, would make our city less safe or less, you know, enjoyable for people to live in? Like, this.
I don't, I don't think gender-affirming care is safe at all to children. I think it sets them down a path to where they regret decisions in their life. I think the whole process is not fair to children. I think it, it goes doctors, and hospitals, and teachers, all heading down this path that they can't change. I don't think the whole concept, it's not even gender-affirming care, it's gender-denying care.
And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say that you've let us know that, and appreciate your feedback, but I think that until you can give us some more tangible feedback to the specific ordinance, I think that would be, again, it would be more helpful for us.
Okay, well, just let me leave my last paragraph, which is more, maybe more specific of what we're talking about.
Okay, please.
There are thousands of men and women who learn the hard way, you can never change your gender. Male or female is in your DNA through and through and through. Pronouns can't switch it. Lifelong meaning dangerous hormones can't change it, not even horror-ridden surgeries that replace healthily, properly functioning, God-given body parts with jerry-rigged and constantly malfunctioning, man-made body parts that sterilize you for life. God does not make mistakes, humans do. Let's keep kids from making ones that haunt them for the rest of their lives.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Yep.
My name's Pat Shipman, I'm from Northampton, Florence. Again, on the gender-affirming healthcare, what does that entail? This is, I mean, you're setting forth a plan for what the city is gonna follow. They're gonna follow the state. So you don't really have, do you know what those gender-affirming healthcare is?
I do.
Okay.
And I think, as far as this ordinance goes, basically what this ordinance states is that if someone has had gender-affirming healthcare, that a city employee will not disclose that to, to somebody that is looking for that information, that could be then used punitively against them.
So you're not deciding what gender-affirming healthcare is, you know?
And that's not part of this ordinance.
Right, yeah, you're just saying.
We're just saying that if a city employee comes into information that someone has had that, that they shouldn't disclose that.
It'd be up to the individual to.
It'd be up to the individual to disclose that, yep.
So.
So, and that's, yeah, that part is.
And you're not in the school committee, and you're not, you're just into terminology and considerations of what city employees can do and cannot do.
Yep. Yep, this doesn't, basically, that part doesn't apply to anybody other than city employees, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Zare?
Well, city contractors too, but basically it's just protecting legally protected healthcare that's already legally protected within the Commonwealth. So it's just extending it down to the municipal level to make sure that city employees or contractors of the city do not use people's medical information, disclose it to other states where it's been criminalized or civilly illegal, so.
This specific medical information?
Excuse me, please, if you'd like to speak, just raise your hand.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll move this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay. This specific medical information or any medical information?
It's, well, generally, any medical information shouldn't be disclosed because of HIPAA laws, but this is specific because it has been criminalized, and there are civil penalties in other states where, you know, people have that view.
Is COVID vaccine needs medical information?
Are COVID vaccines?
Yeah.
Yeah, whether you've had a COVID vaccine, I think would be.
Is that covered, be protected?
Not under this ordinance.
Okay, so you protect gender-affirming care, but you don't protect COVID, people decide with having a COVID shot?
That's not up to me, nobody's put that forward yet, so.
I just understand the precedents here, decide what you think's important to protect and what you don't think's important.
Yeah, but that wasn't presented to this body, so.
Just trying to turn it out.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Powell Wilson from East Hampton. I just have a question.
Sure.
So this has to do with more privacy and confidentiality regarding gender-affirming healthcare services that an individual has received?
Yes.
And you were saying that normally HIPAA laws protect, but isn't that just for the people that are in, that are healthcare workers professionally? So somebody who is a cashier, or a secretary, or another administrative that's not an employee would not fall under the HIPAA rules, right?
That I don't specifically know the answer to. I do know that generally disclosing other people's health information is.
Yeah, that's a no-no.
Yeah, and so I don't know if HIPAA laws specifically say that if you found out that I had something wrong with me, and then you disclosed that, if you would have any liability? I don't know that, because you're not a healthcare worker directly with me, which is why I think that gray area is kind of made less gray with the specific language.
So that's what you're trying to do here?
Right.
You're trying to, like, HIPAA, you're doing it with the employees?
Right.
To try to maintain that similar kind of confidentiality.
Correct. Correct.
One more question, real quick.
Yep.
So if you don't disclose this information, does that mean that biological males would be considered a higher as a woman when they're actually males in the records?
So, no, I don't think that, I think that would be an HR issue, I think that the person would be acknowledged as they presented themselves. And, you know, as we talk about, you know, biological sex, I think that, like, most HR people are not gonna concern themselves with that necessarily. I don't, I don't think it, because if someone's intersex, then what do you classify?
So if that's the case, how, and we're trying to make sure that, you know, women get jobs, how's that not skew census records when you have a person who's a biological male?
Again, I don't think that's relevant to this conversation.
Thank you.
And I think that, you know.
Because you're, it is relevant because one thing, because you're hiding the information that they've had this care.
No, no, there's not, again, so hold on a second. So, no, there's no hiding of information, this is just, employees are not disclosing information to the places where that information could be used against the person. So there's no hiding of information, and whatever our HR within the city does, which I'm sure is respectful to the employee and respectful to their wishes and needs, I don't think it's gonna make any discernible difference in any sort of, you know, statistics that are being kept for the employment records in East Hampton, I don't think it's relevant.
If you put somebody that's a male, a female, you don't think that's concerning at all?
And that's not relevant to this discussion.
Okay, all right.
So, any other thoughts before we? Yep.
So this is about the privacy and what the employee is, like, what they are allowed or not allowed to say, like, they're needing to keep things, they can't disclose certain information.
They can't, yeah.
So is an employee, meaning like, for example, a teacher? If a teacher learns of something, the teacher is the employee and comes across some information regarding, like, a student? I don't know, I'm just throwing out an example. So that that means the teacher needs to keep that information private?
Go ahead.
The purpose here is to protect people against criminal and civil actions in states where gender-affirming healthcare, reproductive healthcare has been made illegal and criminalized. So it's protecting, it's protecting people from basically being tattledon, for lack of a better term, in.
Did you say catalog?
No.
Tattle.
Tattle, like, tattletale.
In tattletale.
Okay, that could be. Okay, that could be the old-fashioned word. Yeah, I understand. However, I'm just trying to understand, when I take it out of the officiellese language, which I understand it needs to be this way to cover broad situations. Or, so I'm thinking of a situation, let's say a teacher finds out a child has, you know, leaning towards one way or the other. So now, does that mean that the teacher needs to keep that information confidential? And then can't disclose it to the parent? Like, does the protected individual, under a certain age, if it's a minor, have certain, like what's the extent of the law?
It's not in this language.
It's not relevant to this language.
It's not, okay.
No, no.
So what did that-
So if that's, if that's, if that's an issue you're concerned about, then the school committee is where you would want to go.
Okay, so this is just the part of protecting, just saying that the employee needs to keep confidential? Okay, but it doesn't really describe or delineate whether it applies to minors?
It, it, I, I don't think that that would be, it's, it's not, as I read through this, it's not in here.
Okay, so it seems like that's sort of a, if it's not here, then where is it? And what, how can, how can this be clarified more? Like this, like this be another gray area?
No, because this is basically just, you're not going to furnish information, assistance, or aid to any person or jurisdiction for the purpose of prohibiting, criminalizing, sanctioning, or authorizing a person to bring civil action against, or otherwise interfere with a person, entity, or carrier that seeks, receives, causes, aids, or in excess to aids, or bets, or provides, or attempts to, attempts to seek, receive, cause, aid, and excess to aid or a bet, or provide reproductive healthcare services, or gender-affirming healthcare services. So to me, that doesn't have any relevance to a teacher and a child.
I mean, I, okay, I mean, to, you know, there are different ways to help. One might perceive somebody helping, another might perceive somebody tattling. You know, one might perceive disclosing-
Yeah, but this is very, this is like furnishing information, assistance, or aid, prohibit, specifically prohibiting, criminalizing, or sanctioning. And that would not be-
Can I just make a clarifying motion?
Yeah.
The teacher example keeps coming up. If there were a student who, let's just say was at some point along, you know, in that process, and that student, say moved or traveled at some point to a jurisdiction where either the student or the student's parents could face legal consequences for that decision, the teacher should not call up that jurisdiction and tell them, "Hey, there's this person in your jurisdiction and guess what they did."
Mm-hmm, exactly, yeah, I was thinking of a similar scenario, like if a family's visiting here, the parents are, for some reason, taking a job here temporarily with their child, they're going to the school, and they're from a state where gender-affirming care has been criminalized, where parents could go to jail for that, and the teacher calls up, same thing, basically, so yeah.
So the teacher gets a call from Florida, Texas, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And just say, "Hey, have you observed any of this?"
Right. If it doesn't-
And they say something about it, they will then face consequence.
They'll be referred to.
Yeah.
Whatever that means.
Figure out what.
Which could mean nothing.
Right, because there's no, there's no necessarily prescribed disciplinary actions in here. It's just, you know, they will be referred to HR. And any, you know, disclosing someone's personal information is not okay in multiple scenarios. So there's a, I'm sure there's a line of steps that HR would take.
Yeah, I mean, this does reference MGL, some of the things that were recently passed at the state level. So, you know, it could trigger a call to the Attorney General's Office, for instance, to figure out how that state law would be enforced.
Right. Tom.
So.
Excuse me, ma'am, I was speaking.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm on the city council.
I'm sorry.
So the, just to, I guess that was gonna be my question then is, I, like, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with passing this, even if everything in it were fully redundant, just as a matter of A, it perhaps clarifies some things, and B, you never know what policies are gonna shift outside of municipalities. So there's, I mean, I, I, when I say this, I'm not saying that there, that the, I'm not trying to cast doubt on the value of the ordinance, but what I do ask is like, that situation that I just described, to me, seems like something that if it would happen right now without that, this ordinance, would probably still be a substantial HR problem on, on, on. I, I don't actually know how it's handled, but my guess is between state regs and whatever sort of ethics the, the teachers and the rest of the city have to operate under, you know, my, my guess is that that would be, I mean, you know, like, there's, there's another section in here that says that the, basically, the police department is not going to arrest somebody on behalf of these institutions.
And they, and they can't, just to be clear, I mean, this is basically, that part's almost just reinforcing state law.
Right, or, or they wouldn't, like, if someone's detained for an unrelated reason. But that's like, you know, cannabis is legal in Massachusetts and illegal in different states, but, you know, if somebody were to come up here and use cannabis, that, that state can't like call us up and be like, "Hey, you need to arrest it," like, because that's not something that we enforce. So, like, I think that that's our, but I do think that, you know, just given the intensity of the climate, there's, there's a value in clarifying these things. But again, like, it seems to me like a lot of this is stuff that, even before a lot of these conversations started, I think most reasonable people would agree is, like, is, is the case, is the right way to handle these sorts of matters.
Counselor.
And I agree, but I think that, I mean, to speak about gray areas, I think that was a gray area. And I think that's why Mayor Driscoll and now Lieutenant Governor Driscoll in Salem created this language, because it, it made a little bit more clear exactly what the local prescriptions are, as opposed to what you're saying, that it's most likely a problem, but then how do you deal with that most likely problem?
Sure.
So, yeah.
Any sense?
Yeah, and I know that you wanted to make a comment, so please, feel free.
It's okay, I'm, I'm excited.
Okay. Counselor Riley, do you have any thoughts on this?
Nope, I mean, I, I am comfortable voting if the committee is comfortable.
I, I think that that is probably inappropriate.
I think that it's time to send it to the solicitor. I mean, there, there could be some minutia in here that we need to rework, but the broad idea of what this is is something that I think we, I, I, I think we all, the four of us at this table agree on, and I think that, you know, there, there will be other opportunities to debate the larger issues, but I do think that, you know, everyone's made their positions relatively clear on this. So I don't see any reason to belabor the point unless there's any actual matter of policy that we want to change. And the only thing I could think was the, the one point that you just amended, so should we?
Just, well, just amended.
Do you want me to read you what I, what I added in there?
Yeah, yeah, why not, yeah.
Uh, this, because we could, we could maybe tweak it, because I know, especially you and Mr. Chair have some experience with, so the city shall make available writing or via electronic communications. Wait a second. Sorry. On the health department, the health department shall post on its official city website and other forms of city communications, any current or future-
Perfect. I think that's fine. So it would be under A, the health department shall post on its city official website or any of, like, so if they have any bulletin boards or anything like that.
And that should be six dash twenty-three point five with zero point one also, just to be clear. And then, like I said, like I think I told you, Mr. Chair, I am happy to kind of prepare, like, have a background document for the solicitor to, so.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Get some resources.
And so what I'll do is, once we take the vote, I'll email it to the president, and maybe you can attach the background stuff. And it sounds like we, it seems like we have one more comment before we get a motion on the table.
Well, it's a clarification. Six, two, three, four, safe access to protected health care. The very last thumb in the next page, or just flip it over. While those CPCs have a right to advocate against abortion, that right does not encompass the use of deceptive, hypnotizing, or other forms of abortion. What does that exactly mean specifically, in simple terms? I mean, we could diverse from that, but I want to try to get a better understanding.
Oh, was that in the preamble?
I don't, I don't know.
Was that in the findings?
It's six dot, two, three, dot, four. And if you flip the paper over, it's the very last statement, sentence.
I think you might have your papers, your pages.
Yeah, I think that might be in the preamble.
She's looking at that sentence above the-
Yeah, I think that's just-
Oh, that's in definitions.
I'm sorry?
I think that's in, uh-
Is that in the original, six point two, three point two is my guess?
Correct.
Yes, so that's the findings, it's like a preamble.
It's a preamble. So that's not gonna be in the ordinance. That's gonna be separate.
But it's right here.
Right. It, it's the preamble that came along with the language to the ordinance. And so, and that is gonna be-
When you discussed that before about the preamble.
We just talked about that, so how we're gonna separate it from the ordinance. So as the ordinance goes into the city ordinances, that's starting at definitions, right here.
Yeah, I think we could, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I think, I think we, we can make that more into a resolution of source or proclamation.
Yep.
Which is actually just, you know, just to tell, just to speak about the landscape. So Cambridge passed something equivalent to what Somerville did, but Framingham? Framingham basically passed language that was basically just our preamble and findings. So they call it proclamation, we have new proclamations from the city council, but-
Right.
But the bottom line is, yeah, we could, we could create a separate document, and then I could figure out some way to reference it, maybe in a scope statement or something like that.
And, and that could go along with the resolution?
Yeah, do you, so it would be referenced in the ordinance, I guess.
Yep.
I'll figure out how to do that.
Figure out where, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but it will be, it'll all be public record anyway, so.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's like, as far as like the, the reason for separating this out is because those two pieces have a lot of current information, which then the ordinances are encapsulated for time immemorial. So.
Right.
You know, those are more appropriate to be in a accompanying document that doesn't get encapsulated in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think it could have a simple, sorry.
Written, writ, you know, so it can be spoken with, before the passage.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I think, yeah, and that, yeah, I think it works.
Okay.
Confluent mentioned about probably the resolution, resolution passed along with the city ordinance, is that what you're-
So it would be, and so-
I'm not familiar with the resolution.
So a resolution is just a statement that's read, that is, you know, basically, gives a little bit of background and information related to the ordinance, which is gonna be separate, which is gonna go into the city ordinances, which, like I said, starts at definitions.
And that is what you're gonna vote on, not the resolution?
So the resolution gets voted on at this full council?
So it's in its entirety, but it's two different menus?
Yeah.
So a resolution is just a statement of an opinion of the council. It has no legally binding power, it's just saying, "We, the city council, at this point, on this day, believe this." And an ordinance is an actual legal document that can be enforced by municipal government. And so the parts of this that broadly say, "These are the things that we believe", we would be moving into a resolution, whereas the things we say, "These are the things that we don't want city employees to do," would be in the ordinance.
Right. Yep, so, um-
We did something similar with the digits people said.
Yes, yep, exactly. So, yep, yep.
So, and, and to what Sandy was saying, so how, how would we know that other than asking the question here? It's not defined that way on the page, it's confusing to us, because we're not used to this.
Yeah, what's not defined?
Like, it doesn't define, this is gonna be in the ordinance, this is gonna be in the preamble.
I can, I can do an easy explanation, so.
It doesn't say it on here, so for us, it's confusing, like, we are normally, you know, objective things, and you can't-
So anytime, anytime that you see language, so like in that very first page, where it says "whereas," and there's all of these statements that say "whereas."
So I didn't print that out.
Oh, okay.
So they don't have the full, because I just saved paper. I only printed from definitions on, just, I just, since we're discussing the ordinance, I just printed the ordinance.
Okay. So it's a separate document, anytime you, a resolution will say, you know, "whereas," followed by statements, and then it'll say, you know, "therefore, you know, be resolved," or whatever, "on this day." And those are usually, when you see documents like that, that's what it looks like as a resolution, and those are non-binding.
But more broadly, we had decided to break those up at this meeting.
Yeah.
So, I would have submitted this thing in its entirety, we had brought the city clerk. Today, the city clerk sent an email saying, "Hey, I think this sort of thing doesn't normally go in an ordinance." And so at the beginning of this meeting, like, what are we now? Like forty, forty or so minutes ago, we discussed separating the two documents. So that's when we made that determination. So you wouldn't have had any reason to know that before then, because we made that decision here forty minutes ago.
Correct. And, and just to say too, in other municipalities, they will include a preamble sometimes, which is, like, if you look at Pittsburgh and Seattle, just, so just to be clear, that different municipalities have different structures for their ordinances and codes. So, yeah, I don't have a problem breaking that, yeah, that was, we just decided that tonight, so.
And so if you go on the website, if you wanted to read it, generally, resolutions don't get much public input, because it's just, it's the, you know, it's the opinion of the council. So, I mean, you're welcome to go read it, but that's, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of time for you to, like, there's not gonna be no public hearing for the resolution, it's just a resolution, it's just the opinion of the council, right, so.
Is that online?
It should be, yep.
Is that now?
I believe it is, yeah.
Because I saw the whole ordinance.
Yeah, so it would be, it was submitted with the packet, so it would be part of the whole thing.
So that will be, once you decide what you're going to submit to the lawyer, that will be online after he sees, the lawyer sees it? So we can, you know, read it and, and have an understanding, so if we come again, we can express ourselves more clearly?
Yes.
Because you always say go to-
Yeah, so it is on everything, so it's online right now.
The full ordinance, the original.
The full ordinance, and then the original. And so, but the part that we changed is from definitions on.
Okay.
So which is the actual ordinance, that's the law. That's the piece that's the law.
Okay, and I, I just want to point out, thank you for that explanation. It was a learning curve for me, because I'm not used to resolution versus ordinances. But what I had read, that one sentence, I think that's a very powerful statement there. And it can be a matter of interpretation, and that's when you go, everybody gets to their lawyer and say, "No, no, no, it's this way or not that way." But anyways, again, thank you for that explanation.
Welcome.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so, and we, we've heard the amended language. I think it's motion time.
Okay, I will make the motion to send six, the proposed six dash two, three, safe and fair access to legally-protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services as amended to the city's solicitor for review. Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those against? None? Okay, so motion passes. Counselor's there.
So, Mr. Chair, I will, I'll create a new document that's appropriately numbered.
Yes.
As well, to reflect the changes by moving the preamble and findings.
Perfect. And if you can just email that to myself and President Gomez, that way we can get the, get it moving, and how we voted. Okay, thanks everybody for your input. So we, I just wanted to check in really quick on, I put vacant storefront on here, because I wanted to make sure that you both saw the language. And I had to make a couple of small changes. And I just wanted to make sure that the committee was okay, because we've already voted.
Right.
And, but they were kind of executive decision changes, but I would prefer to have those changes be at least acknowledged.
Sure.
So one of the things that we had never really discussed in it, as I was re-typing the ordinance- the ordinance, I, I realized that the way that we had worded it, if you owned an apartment on Main Street, and your apartment was vacant on the third floor, then this ordinance would apply to them. And I didn't think that was our intent.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could have a, if we were Boston, I think you could have a different conversation, because there are issues in some places of people speculating on residential property and holding it vacant.
Right.
Whatever, but I don't think that we're quite there on the gender affirmation.
Not, not quite.
So...
What does the language say?
It says residential properties that have not been historically used as commercial space or do not have a ground-level commercial space are exempt from this ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I, I would approve that.
Okay.
That, that's the new leg.
That's the new language.
Okay, okay, I was, yeah, I was gonna say, that solves your problem.
Exactly, that's the language that solved the problem.
Yeah.
And the, the other thing was, I felt like it made sense for, I'm trying to think, there was, there was a couple other ones. Did you have, did you both have a chance to read the, the new version?
I did, but if I'm being honest, I didn't like find a comment. Which ones were which?
Oh, right, right, right.
So like, I saw that, but I don't know that it even clicked with me that, like, I don't, I didn't do a close comparison to the last draft.
Right.
So what are the other changes?
It was small, one was when we talk about fees. Originally, we had said the city council will set fees for inspections, and I felt like, we don't regularly set fees for inspections, I felt like it just made so much more sense to have the building commissioner set the fee. And the building commissioner already sets fees.
Yeah.
And I was like, maybe we should just simplify this and make it so the building commissioner sets the fee. And let me see if I can find that exactly where that is, so I can read it in context. But I, I had a feeling that you, you would not, there wouldn't be a big problem with that, but I did make that change just because I was looking through and seeing where we set fees, and I, like, there's, I couldn't find any. So let me just see if I can find it. I think it's on inspections, and it says, the city may assess a fee for inspections under this ordinance in an amount to be established by the building commissioner.
Just that.
I felt like that was fair. The building commissioner sets fees for inspections anyway.
Yep.
So it's not something that's outside the scope. And was there anything else? It was basically, you know, the other, and I don't think I made any other changes other than those two, those were basically outside of what the solicitor had suggested to us the last time we accepted the solicitor's language. And that, so that was basically, oh, I'm sorry, there was one last thing, date of effect. I added date of effect. So we had talked about three months from the passing.
Right.
And so I put, the ordinance shall take effect June 1st, 2023. I felt like that was fair, it's a little over three months.
Sure.
So, but I just, I, again, we had just talked about three months, we hadn't really, like, that wasn't a hard, a hard date that we had set, and I didn't want to just unilaterally do that. So that's, we can discuss that, if you feel like three months isn't enough, then we can look at that.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Well, I mean, so the public hearing for this is next week?
Next, not, no, it's not next week, it's the, it's the meeting after.
Okay, so then maybe July would be closer, three months than June?
Okay.
Because June 1st is already less than three months.
Oh, okay. I was thinking, is that our next meeting, but yeah, you're right. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll send Barbara an email and just be like, hey, I think we're going to switch this, I mean, we can always just amend it at...
Should we just take that vote?
Let's just, let's take the vote to, to put it to July, July 1, and that syncs up with most people's fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments that we just discussed.
Okay. Seconded? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you.
So, and unless there's anything else on that, I feel like that ordinance is in a pretty good spot, so we should be good for the public hearing.
And I appreciate, I know that I asked a lot of questions on this one.
No, it's perfect.
Probably made it take a little longer than I thought.
It's fine, it's fine.
I think I'm feeling good about where it is.
Me too, me too, and I hope it does its intended purpose, so, that being said, we don't have anything else on our agenda. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.